We'll call the meeting to order. All members present in the counting form. We begin each meeting with our pledge of allegiance. So would you please stand and join us in the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance is the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everyone. We haven't had a full house for quite some time. And it's a positive crowd compared to what we've been used to in the past. Thank you all for coming on this 25th day of September. We'll begin with the approval of the agenda. Jeff, do you have anything to add?
I don't.
Okay. Nor do I. So I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as listed.
Only motion.
So Lynn? Katie? On the second. Other discussion. All in favor of the approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Schedule presenters. We begin tonight with one of our alumnus from Cannon Falls. Brad Lindell, are you willing to tell us class of?
1971.
1971.
I graduated with some show plus.
It's not you. I'm not a brother or sister.
No stories, please.
Brad is the representative and he'll tell us his correct title for the schools for Equity and Education, which has been our partner for a number of years. Brad, I'll turn it over to you. Jeff, unless you have something to add?
No, I was just gonna say that. No, just tell me when you want to go down one and I'll start the slide here.
Okay, great. Well, again, thanks for coming down, for lobbying and coming down and visiting with you. It's always good to come back to the hometown and see how everything's going. And I'm keeping up with it on the beacon. So again, it's really great to be here, good to see all the folks in the crowd. And I don't think they're here for me, but. Again, Schools for Equity can flip to the next thing. Founded 1979, we then were the Association of Stable and Growing School Districts. The thing that brought the group together was low property wealth and then low categorical funding. I mean, we talked about the way the funding mechanisms work. The districts over there were, there were districts that were growing when the rest of the state was declining. And so the property tax took on a bigger, more importance because they were building a lot of buildings in these districts. And so trying to get that balance, a property tax balance is very, very important. The organization, plaintiffs composed, the plaintiffs in the school scheme for statements on lawsuit in 1988, which created the equalization programs. The plaintiffs won at the district court level, but lost at Supreme Court level. But the legislature did make some changes to the property tax system to help low property wealth districts. We renamed ourselves Schools for Equity and Education in 1995. And again, the word equity has taken on kind of a nebulous meaning. And I think that we'll be thinking about maybe changing our name again in some time because simply, you know, it's just, it's taken on a different, we're about property tax equity and funding equity. That's what we're about. But there's so many different equities running around out there now that we try to make sure that, we want to make sure we stay clear of our mission and that our name reflects that mission. Okay, a coalition of 50 districts through cooperative units, about 240,000 students. Our district demographics don't generate considerable categorically, as I said earlier, or have low property and/or have low property wealth values. We'll get to show you your comparisons and the data that I put together for, shows how your district fares on these things. But we move to the next. What do you get for C member benefits? Constant presence as state capital. And I was there every day, blogging every night. And it was raining sideways from January 6 until the end of session. Very, very heavy duty session. We have quality members, programs at our general membership meetings. We just had one last Friday. We have those both in person up in Roseville, but we also use the owl so that people can watch from home. And we also have, the materials at the meetings are available to C members. So ability to network with districts with similar challenges. We have several members down here around this area. But also you can probably see districts from other parts of the state that may or may not have the same, or may have similar challenges. And being able to network with those folks as to how they're solving some of those challenges and being able to share what you've done as well can be very helpful. Data and resources specific to your district to assist in communications with community and legislators. I'll show you some of those things that I've worked out. And then Kim Springer is our community outreach liaison. We have our day, we have like days on the hill. We bring up regional folks, days on the hill. And you know, Kim and I kind of help, Kim really does a lot of that organizing. And you know, so you can interface with your legislators on those days. And hopefully, again, the problem, of course, for so many is that everyone's working. And so again, hopefully we can get those schedules out. And if you have the opportunity to join us on a day on the hill, we certainly would welcome, welcome that participation. Okay, here we go. The general ed comparison for, as you can see for Cannon Falls, you're about $1,200, a little more than $1,200 below the state average in terms of general education revenue funding. And the things that point, the big differences what you'll see is a little over $500 in the compensatory education. And then also, was that about $500 in the operating levy. Those are the two places that really, you know, take, most of that $1,200 comes in those two areas. You'll see some places you're a little bit up. Transportation sparsity, there was a little bit of an improvement there this year to help with that. Certainly not enough. But again, a little bit more on the equity formula than other districts. Again, we might be trying to rework the equity formula to make that a little bit more, you know, create a little bit more of a boost for districts within Cannon Falls situation as we move forward into the next session. Again, as we're trying to get some things there to help districts that are lower than the state average to get up closer to the state average. This shows where you rank statewide. And out of 331 districts, on the general education revenue, you're 281st out of 331. Special ed, 181st. Other revenue, which is like long-term facilities maintenance, career tech. You're not a Q comp district, so that, or the Q comp district, so that's a place where you're below the state average there as well. But if you look at total revenue there, you're 255th out of 331. And again, what we need to do is, again, there was a lot of money that went into education this year. But did that, how did that get distributed? And how does that make, how does it allow you to do the things that you need to do as a school district to make sure every kid walks out of here with what they need to make their next step? And that next step can be college, can be two-year college, can be right into the job market, can be military service, could be whatever they need to do. We want to make sure that our member districts have those capabilities or have those resources to create those capabilities for those kids to be able to do what they need to do. So here's a kind of a surprise for me. And again, I've, you know, watched these things constantly. And one thing is that the referendum market value, which is just no ag land involved. This is just businesses dollar per, business on the, on the just net tax capacity where ag land is in. And then the, this is just, there's no ag land in business and residential are the same. So like if, so usually in some measures of property tax, the commercial property is assessed not only at a higher value, but a higher rate. This is the residential and the businesses at the same rate. Part of the issue here, as I think, is a district that's been kind of flat in terms of number of residential students. It's your total property wealth divided by the number of students. And so your property wealth could be just creeping up. But if your students aren't kind of going along with that, your denominator not growing makes you look richer than you actually are. And I think that's one of the things that we're trying to, as I look at these issues, trying to figure out, maybe there's a better way to measure, you know, property wealth and property wealth comparisons. But if you look at, again, the districts with more than a million dollars of referendum market value per pupil, and that's, a lot of those districts are inside the 694, 494 beltway. You think of Edina, you think of Mentonka, was that, those folks? They've got an advantage compared to you when you look at how they go out to their voters. I mean, they have very high referenda, up near the referendum cap. And the reason they have that is because I was, the only sport I was much good at was track. And if, is, are Lynette and Renee, are they your aunts? If one of them had gone off in the men's basketball team, I'd have gotten cut. But again, I think that I was fairly good at track. And the thing is, is that if you run around the track, if you're a low property wealth district, you get a dollar. If you're a high property wealth district, you get three dollars. And so those districts are going to want to run and low property wealth district is going to get really tired. And I think that's the thing that you'll see. And again, the other thing with property wealth that you always have to remember is it doesn't necessarily equate to income. And I think that incomes inside that beltway are higher than they are out here. So even if you have property wealth, it doesn't automatically translate to the ability to pass referenda. So here's a tax, a tax effort comparison. Again, you look at those districts with more than a million dollars per pupil in terms of, and there you see, they're getting up there. It's hard to turn 70, your eyes get worse. That was a laugh line.
Oops.
It's the truth, though.
You see, you get about $2,700 per kid up there in terms of what they're doing in the referendum. And they're paying $471 on a $250,000 property. On Cannon Falls, you get less than half of that and getting $361 on a $250,000 property. So again, twice as much money for $100 more on a $250,000 property. And then that's one of the things that we worked on. We haven't had much luck getting traction in the last few years. And we're going to try to push this year because as we saw last week when Bill Morris did their presentation at the C meeting, property taxes is one of the number one concerns of voters throughout the state. So we really want to take a look at this and get more state effort into, you know, in and out of that property tax system. Moves in net tax capacity, here again, Cannon Falls, I think this is when you get the ag land in. And again, high value, you know, the ag land here is, you know, it's very good ag land. And then again, very highly valued. And so again, that's where you're going to see you're a little bit, again, above the state average. But always that caveat about the number of students that the whole value is being divided by really shows. And this is student served, not student resident students. So again, you're going to see that denominator not, if that were to be going along with the vote, with the growth in the value, you would probably see yourselves closer to the state average. Okay, what happened in 2023? While they spent about two and a half billion dollars on education, 4% and 2% on the formula with the basic formula tied to inflation going forward with a 2% floor and a 3% cap. So I think one of the things that folks have been worried about for the last, well, ever since I've been lobbying on this issue, not being able to plan going forward as to what that basic formula is going to be. With this tied to inflation, you're going to see, at least you can say, this is what the basic formula is going to be. Now, is that going to be enough? Is inflation going to be 5% and the 3% cap, you're still going to fall behind? We just don't know. But at least having some commitment to saying the basic formula will be going up because we've seen, again, throughout my career, I've seen years where the formula's been zero or a percent and zero or percent and a percent. Having that tied to, you know, at least somewhat tied to inflation should be helpful. Big thing here, the 44% reduction in the special ed cost subsidy. For years and years, and again, this is the costs of the special ed, providing special ed services, which are services that are mandated by law. And the formula has not kept up with those costs over many, many years. And I think that having this reduction in the special ed cost subsidy to at least recognize, we need to give districts more money to take care of that, to take care of those mandated services. Voluntary pre-kindergarten, I don't imagine you're qualifying down here, but that's something that has been taken care of. I think it's kind of, it was one of these things where every year it seemed to be the last thing decided. And there's the districts that have that voluntary pre-kindergarten now have that built into the base. But funding for student support personnel, and again, that's going to be ramping up. I think that the thing with the student support personnel, one thing that's important to note is that that, those dollars can be used to retain positions that you hired during COVID. So if you've got a social worker or student, other student support personnel, a nurse, school psychology, psychologists that you hired with the, during, with the COVID dollars, you can use this money now to maintain that position. And that's a really key thing because again, as we saw, I don't know what was, what you guys did with your COVID money. And you probably didn't receive a lot of COVID money. But if you did use it on those positions, you can retain those positions with that. There needs to be some cleanup in that, in that language. And I think that we'll be working on that next year. Not the amount of money coming out, but how to best, would it be best for a lot of districts just to work for their cooperatives to do those kinds of things? Well, I just have to see how that, how that plays out. But that's something that's still is going to be, being developed. The REDA Act, which was a, again, we talked about the REDA Act at our C meeting last Thursday. And Bobby Burnham from the Minnesota Department of Education came in and talked about the REDA Act. What, it's kind of slow being rolled out, but they want to do it the right way. The question here is that, I don't know what you've used. Have you done letters or have you done any of those trainings? And again, and curriculum, is that $35 million are going to be enough to reimburse all schools for all the curriculum that they've provided or that they've purchased? And I think that that's something, again, we don't need another unpaid mandate or unfunded mandate. And so I think one of the things that they'll be doing, I think, the governor's office will be doing and also legislature will be doing, will be kind of mapping how much is going to be needed to really fully fund that. The $40 million for professional development, kind of the same thing. I think the other thing to remember is that if you bought curriculum going back to 2021, I think January, July 1st, 2021, you can be reimbursed for that. They haven't figured out the reimbursement form yet, but I'm not, I'm not going to say anything about how the Department of Education, I'll put their forms together. I'll let, I'll let, you guys know that firsthand. Library aid, there's $40,000 of library aid that every district will be getting. And then also there's an increase in American Indian aid. One thing that's not on there that I think will also be mapping is the unemployment insurance for the between-term employees. I don't know what that was in your district, how many percent is. They put $134 million aside to pay for that. We're guessing that's not going to be enough statewide. And if that's not enough statewide, then it's another unfunded mandate. And so I think that we just need to find out. I think one of the things that this year that might undershoot because so many districts, so many employees didn't know they could apply because the legislature ended and they had like a week to apply for unemployment. A lot of people had already signed contracts who may not have signed a contract had they known they'd been eligible for unemployment insurance. So next year will be the year when we'll have the full idea as to how much that's going to cost. But my guess is it's going to cost more than $134 million. And that's another place where legislature oftentimes has ideas. You can argue whether they're good ideas or bad ideas. But the point is, is that if they implement those ideas, those ideas should be funded. Here's the money that came to Cannon Falls this year. But you can see the numbers there, about a little less than a million dollars came to the district. 7.3% increase. The other categories there that were included in the increases, everything else really was just, there's other programs in those other revenue categories. But this is just the, the $83 million were the only ones that went above base. That $84 million is the only one, went above base. You can see the student support personnel, library aid, long-term facilities maintenance revenue. Those things probably were kicked up a little bit, so.
Are these Cannon Falls numbers or?
Those are Cannon, oh, geez, that's a Cannon Falls number.
Just forget.
I just want to say, and I'm doing these PowerPoints, I proof them. And then I just did one for Fridley a week earlier and just cross out Fridley and put in Cannon Falls. So here's our mission. And again, we just want to make sure that every kid in the state of Minnesota has access to high-quality education they need to make those next, to make those next steps. And then our, here's our contact information. So there's how you can get ahold of us. And again, and for any questions you might have, and again, we just, I really just want to thank you for your support and your membership as we're moving forward. And again, it's going to be, I'll be retiring after the 2024 session, or at least semi-retiring. And I want to make sure that I go out kind of like, I wasn't a very good basketball player, but I did win Mr. Florburn's award. I want to be Mr. Florburn's again this year. And the ghosts of Frank Hawks will be urging me out like that. No, again, just thanks so much for being part of C, part of our effort. And again, want to make sure we're hearing from you as to what your needs are as a district, especially in, when you hear something from your local legislators and you need to check back with me as to how they, you know. Again, a lot of what I've done, been around the legislature for almost 50 years now. And again, just help translate some things sometimes because a lot of the jargon gets tossed around. And I know that I've tossed jargon out tonight. And so you might want to ask your legislators about the jargon I've tossed out. But again, the, just that ability to kind of make that message, clarity of message for what you have and how we can help you, you know, work with your legislators, work with governor's office, work with the folks you need to make decisions to help you do the job that you're doing very well.
Thank you.
At one point in time, there was some talk about, well, was it maybe last winter? Or we had meetings down in Cass.
Right.
And legislators abound there. And at the time, there was conversation about more autonomy, which was seen to be totally supported by the group. But it didn't happen. Is there anything on that conversation? We know what's best for Cannon Falls.
Well, I think that's always been the, I've always thought that, you know, again, that, I think the legislature has a right to say what should happen, but you should have control over how that happens. And I think, you know, because they're going to say, well, I mean, you want every kid to know. And again, they shouldn't get down into the gearbox as far down as they get oftentimes. But as, when it comes to delivering, you guys know exactly what you need. You know your community, you know how to do it. You know your strengths as a district and how you're going to make those strengths stronger. I think that, yeah, there's, one of the challenges is, I've always thought is that sometimes, maybe that's not true anymore with WebMD, but you know, it used to be, not everybody, not everybody's been a doctor. So that you don't argue with your doctor a lot. But everybody went to high school. So they argue, they argue with your school board, they argue with the teachers. And so I think the thing is, is that there needs to be, and I know that MSBA's worked very, very hard on this over the years. I think Lucy Payne from up in Montomedi is a really, again, what the legislature sets out as goals, but then really free up districts to be able to do what they need to do to meet those goals. As opposed to saying, you got to have this, you got to have that. I mean, when they look at the student support personnel piece, I mean, now student mental health, and that's an important thing. Should they be putting aside money for student support personnel? Or should they just be giving you the money, letting you figure out, how are we going to meet our mental health needs of our students? Those, I think that's one of the things that we see with a lot of these formulas now is that they look at a segment of students as opposed to the entire Minnesota student population. I think that's really, that's really one of the things. And that's why the general ed should be higher and more equally distributed. And we should kind of move away from some of these smaller categorical programs to do this, that, or the other thing. And I think that that's, again, I've been, I've been fighting that one, but I'll have to admit I haven't been that sexy. Mr. Florburn said not to, hasn't been getting the job done on that one. But I think more autonomy for districts, I think, is really, really important. And I think that, and I think we saw that, I mean, we've seen districts that oftentimes are innovative, not be able to be as innovative as they would want to be because there's someone coming out from the State Department or from the legislature saying, geez, you shouldn't be doing that. I mean, they need to, I mean, the bottom line is, are the kids learning? Are they, where are they moving, are they moving on to their next step successfully? Are you able to provide that broad range of services for the kids? Again, that not every kid's a blackboard learner. How do we create those environments for those kids to say, I can make that next step now too? And so doing that, I mean, it's going to take, you know, I think the problem is, is that everybody's, everybody's got, my old boss used to tell me when I was on legislative staff is that everything's in the statutes with somebody's good idea at one point in time. And they got enough votes to make their idea not, and it may not have been a good idea. But, and we need to kind of really step back, especially in nowadays, when we have so many more ways to deliver things to kids, how should we be doing that? And allowing districts to really design their programs in that way. And I mean, I think going back to the online learning, there's been, you got to jump through 99 hoops to get online learning done. Shouldn't it just be if the kid's online, gets access to online learning and they've learned, they've shown you that they've learned, shouldn't that be enough? So I mean, that's the questions that we have.
Thank you. Any other comments for Brad?
Brad, I was looking at our rankings here and obviously there's room for improvement. Are there action items we can take out of this to improve? I understand the operating levy is a big portion of that.
Right.
What are the things we can take out of this to?
Well, I think, I think the thing is, is that I, again, I'm trying to come up with a new formula this year to help the districts that have low categorical revenue. And I think that there's a number of those districts in C. You think like a St. Michael Albert Hill or, you know, I mean, they're kind of all over the state. But they're districts that don't have high levels of free introduced press lunch. And they don't, so they don't generate a lot of these kind of bells and whistle formulas. They're just really kind of the meat and potatoes is what they get. So higher general ed is always important. But the other thing is, and I'll get this to you guys when I'm trying to get the data runs figured out on it, to try to get that equity formula, both in terms of categorical funding and the referendum funding, to get those things moving up higher so that you're going to get, you're going to narrow that gap between. I mean, I always say that, you know, I'm using all, I'm using all the sports analogies from my, from my less than stellar high school career. But I mean, someone's going to, not, not everyone's going to finish in first place. And the point is, is that even if you're below the state average, if you've got sufficient enough money to do what it is you need to do, that should be the goal. But the point is, is that you often nine times, here, I'm sure you could use more dollars to do more of the good things that you're doing. We need to find ways to make formulas work. I hate creating new formulas, but I've done it before and I'll do it again. But I guess the thing is, is that to try and get some way to really bring up the bottom, to bring up these people in the, like you in the 281st area, but. to bring up these people in the, like you in the 281st area, but again, there's a lot of districts in this area, in the southeastern Minnesota in the same situation, that we can bring folks up and say, you know, here's an extra 100 bucks a kid, or 150 bucks a kid, do what you need to do. Because you are, again, we, you know, you're not, you're a shank punt away from the metropolitan area. And the thing is, is that they've got more resources than you have. And we just have to make sure you're getting the resources, you need to do what you need to do.
Thank you.
Now I'll let you know on that. I'll let you know as soon as it's, as soon as.
Thank you. Brad, thank you for taking the time and coming down to, like I said, your alma mater here.
Right.
Looking over the town for a while.
Right, well, it's always great to be back here. I don't get in the back nearly as much as I should. But again, I want to thank you for all you're doing. I mean, I wouldn't be where I am today, some people could argue where I am today, but I guess I wouldn't be where I am today without the great education I got from this district. And that really means a lot to me, prepared for me, had a lot of great teachers, had access to a lot of great activities that really helped round me out. And again, I think that that's, I can't say enough about what this district and this area means to me. And again, I thank you for all you've done and all the support you've given, not just C and me, but the kids in this district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next scheduled presenter, Roxanne Soder, is speak about the milk grant update.
I know, it's like, I listen to that and I'm going, how can that help with our teacher salaries? It's like, when I've been addressing the board, it's always been for negotiations. So this is, this is much more fun. And I'm here, I'm representing the Goodhue County American Dairy Association, and Jessica's here also. And I've even pulling Courtney out to Hobel for the egg community, just to talk about the milk dispensers that, they are fully implemented now in, in both the high school and elementary. And just to give a little bit of background, two years ago, in the whole farm to school quality products, milk served out of bags is much, tastes better, kids drink more of it, I mean, there's just all kinds of reasons. And two years ago, Midwest Dairy was actually providing grants to school districts to pay for a milk machine. At that time, there wasn't much interest in Cannon Falls, you know, to get it going. So it just kind of, it's just been sitting out there. But as more and more people approached the district, about it last spring, got an email from the district saying, hey, what can you tell us about the milk machines? And so we did a little bit more research. This kitchen staff from the high school and elementary went over to Goodhue, and they came back just really excited about using it. So, you know, if you have the kitchen staff on board, then let's go with it. And so Midwest Dairy was offering some grants still, not full, but so our dairy and Brad and Jessica Anderson's dairy applied for grants with a, they had to be separate, so one was for the high school, one was for the elementary. And we got a partial grant to partially fund the schools. And then we sent out for some donations, but also another grant, Lori ended up writing, the Goodhue County Community Health offers grants. And we were able to secure a grant from them too, so that was nice. But I want to recognize all the, there were a lot of, we approached farmers and people that worked in the egg community to donate, and I just, I need to recognize them right now, that it was Shokwah's Hay and Straw, McNamara Dairy in Goodhue, the Hobel Family Farms, Soder Dairy, Finn's Car Trucking, which is out of Goodhue, the Goodhue County Corn Producers, Nelson Insurance Agency, and the Goodhue County American Dairy Association. Those were all the donors that did it, that contributed. Plus, besides the ship grant, the Ed Foundation also gave some money for it. So I had to make sure I got everybody there. Yeah. So the reaction from the kids has been really good. First thing I heard was, no more cheese in our milk. You can still even probably remember those days and all the get chunky. And there was some skepticism about the elementary, can the kids handle it? And, you know, the first day was, I was there the first and second day, and it got pretty chaotic, but it went well. I mean, the second day, it was like, they knew what they were doing, you know, and so it's, it's done really well. And I noticed, like, kids that didn't eat their lunch, they drank their milk. And I thought, you know, they were drinking chocolate milk, and we know that refuels you. So they got their quick sugar and their long-term protein to make it till the end of the school day, at least. And so, and there was also, and the kids are taking as much milk as they want, so there's less waste. And the high school had two five-gallon pails there, and I mean, there was only that much up there. And the elementary had smaller pails, and there wasn't much throwaway at all. And I talked, a parent did tell me about their child is lactose intolerant, can't handle much, but she said her daughter just takes a little bit and then washes it down with water. And she said, that's good, they're not wasting the whole thing, they're taking what they want. And so I think, you guys, we did a step in the right direction, and I'm real pleased with how it's going. And just wanted to recognize all the friends of the agriculture that donated and got their grants and, it's a good thing, so.
I'm glad you recognized the people, and Jeff, as a rule, will recognize donations that just a little bit later on the consent agenda, and we have people on there.
Okay, Finn's Car Trucking, I don't think is on there.
No, I don't think that is.
You didn't put a lot of pressure on me to make sure I get all the way.
Well, I, yeah.
There was extensive startup cost to this.
Yes.
And you can see that here by the donations. And thank you to everyone who's contributed and moved this project forward. And I know Clint was jabbing a little bit, we had a walk-around, stopped in the kitchen once and had a little discussion on that. So in general, thank you for improving our school and our lunch program.
Yeah, the chocolate milk really is good. I've heard a lot of people say it, tastes like a chocolate milk shake, people love it, yeah.
I will say, I had a sample of, actually two samples. Very good, very good.
And that's what the milk in the bags lasts longer than the cartons do.
Completely different, and I grew up on bulk tank milk, so I said it's not quite there yet.
Yeah, the whole milk will probably never make it into the school system.
It's close enough.
Well, thank you, thank you, everyone involved.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on down to reports and communication, we won't have a school board rep or student rep here this evening. Are there any board committee reports that you'd like to offer here at this time?
Ed Foundation, Poker Social this weekend, one of our two biggest fundraisers. Mill Street at four o'clock, that's when the registration begins. So that's a big one on Ed Foundation. I see Reed put a report in for community ed that goes over a bunch of the awesome numbers that we have for participation in Cannon Kids and preschool. Anything else you wanted to add on Ed Foundation?
Yeah, I was just going to mention the preschool numbers that, that they went up, and that was awesome, and attendance for sports, now that kids can get in free, like, for example, the homecoming game that we had, I mean, the amount of kids that were back there running around had to have doubled. I mean, it had to, because, and then we were saying that at volleyball games too, so, which is awesome, which then in turn also increased the revenue and concession stands as well. So it's helping out those groups as well, so that was awesome. Otherwise, I'm thinking the only other one that I had too was the marketing meeting. We had a meeting with marketing, and we were just chatting about our Facebook ads and like our Google marketing and the geo-fencing that we've been doing, and how awesome that's been working out. And we saw how many clicks has been happening with that, and the increase in tours due to that. And then also even to go farther than that, not only tours, but then we got some students from those tours actually as well that enrolled. So, so all that stuff is working and doing what it's supposed to be doing.
Facilities continues to meet, we meet during the week, things are going well there. The biggest thing is we have our open house on Wednesday to show off our new CTE space and our maker space, and so Wednesday at five o'clock, if you want to come check that
Anyone else? Okay, moving on down to the administrative board reports. We have attachments from the elementary ed, community ed, operations superintendent, but anything you'd like to add on a personal level?
I don't have anything to add, but all the trips.
The picture of the new students was just sensational.
Super fun.
Yeah, yeah.
I like the T-shirt idea too.
She putting pictures in her reports again?
It was kind of a scramble because it's just a little bit challenging to connect the dots with, oh, this one has a sibling, this, you know, so, yeah, let's go.
Moving down, middle school, high school, and tech.
Yeah, sorry I didn't get a report in to you guys last week, but I'm just going to hit some highlights. Homecoming went great this year again. Like to congratulate, congratulate Piper or Bo Gorman, who is a senior who was awarded a letter of commendation for her PSAT score. So there are different levels of recognition in that whole National Muret Scholarship qualifying type of deal, and Piper received a letter of commendation, so congratulations to her. We've got a lot of kids who are getting in the Innovation Lab and starting to use that, and you'll see a lot of what they're doing on Wednesday if you come to our open house. They're going to be showing off robots, both the 3D printers, the laser engraver, the vinyl printer, podcasting and blogging setups, all have students who are going to be kind of showing off what they've been doing with that for the last few weeks. And then the one big thing, just for parents to be aware, we're going to be changing up our fall conferences a little bit with middle school, high school. We've been doing open drop-in conferences for the last several years, and we're going to try scheduled conferences this time, so teachers are going to be sending a link to parents, where parents can go in and sign up for a time to visit for a little bit of conference time with, with teachers. Roxanne stole my thunder about the milk machines at the high school. And then the last thing I want to, I just want to thank a couple of teachers, Dwayne Pliscott and Bonnie Thel Austin for being very, very patient in getting the shop areas ready so that they can have students doing things, and that they've been very patient, so I appreciate that. As far as tech goes, there's just one big thing with tech. Google changed their, their privacy policies about a month ago, and that threw us into a loop with a lot of the different software and websites that we use based on the new stuff that the state slipped to us last year in, in the middle of the summer. So Stacy Larson and Aaron Burke's probably been working hard to match everything back up again and get everything working, but it's been quite a process, so.
Thank you. Reed, community ed and activities, anything?
I just want to add one thing that came across in an email today. Potentially on Thursday, the Twin Cities Soccer Referee Organization might be going on strike. That could impact us. We do use, our officials are based out of Gamechanger out of the cities. Most officials that come to officiate our soccer matches are Red Wing Fair Bowl Northfield area. So we could be lucky and fortunate there, but if there are members there and they don't want to cross, we could be impacted. I did have one, the officials for Thursday's match already reached out to me, so I think we're going to be okay. But just letting you know that's something, we could be impacted, we really have no control over that. So I'm supposed to be getting more information about that, of what they're looking for and what their reasoning is, but I think it's more of a metro piece.
Question for Reed? Thank you. Head of Operations, you see what's on here from Dave, and Suits Report?
Yes, just a reminder that we'll be taking a tour of the construction area after the board meeting, we'll stop by the Innovation Lab, just to kind of keep your head in and then do a couple peek-ins, probably not completely ready for Wednesday's open house, but you guys will get an idea, at least see the area as it sits right now. As we mentioned earlier, the open house is on September 27th, it's Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:00. Most of you know this already, but our stadium field out back is shut down over some safety concerns, although with as much rain as we had over the past couple of days, it may have softened it up, but probably turned it into a nice little mud pie. And then I still wanted to let you guys know that we are still engaging on the insurance hail claim for roofs at the elementary. And so that is still in progress, it's just been very slow, so. Any questions?
Hearing none? We'll move down to public input. Does anyone wish to speak to the district? There's a large disclaimer here that I will jump out of unless I need to. It's up to three minutes of conversation about topics concerning the district. And if anyone wishes to speak, now is your opportunity. Raise your hand, be recognized. And there is none, moving past. Consideration to approve the finance report, Mr. Davis?
Pretty basic report, it's kind of showing typically your bank balance on top, and this is again, cash balance, not fund balance, so we kind of talked about, they're two separate things. Some things that point out in this model that goes through the end of November. Part of tonight's discussion will be certifying preliminary levy. And as you know, as homeowners, the second half of your property taxes is coming due. And those payments are split, three payments, three paid dates to the district, October 24th roughly, November 2nd, and then the cleanup at the end of November, sometimes that first week in December. But we'll receive the second half of your property taxes, the school portion will come to the district at that time. That, we see through the levy, for instance, tonight will be the 23 levy payable 24. The levy operates in a calendar year, not a fiscal year like the school district does. So usually it is a little bit of transfer of funds, especially during audit time as we true that out. Some of the expenditure items in there that are key to note, bus leases, we've been programmed to try to track with our vehicles, our buses anyway, that all the buses, the whole fleet is turned over in 15 years. In order to do that, there's purchase of one bus each year, along with leasing one that is going to be timed out over five years until it gets on track. In order to do that, we have several leases that run out for three years, the last one being the purchase bus, or the lease bus that we just got for this fiscal year. Normally, we budget about $90,000 for a bus, and if it were to be a lease of three years, generally the finance has to be $33,000 a year payment. This last bus is $124,000, it was paid for outright, which puts us at about 43, 42, 43 for a lease. That's just, and you've seen it in, I suppose, personal vehicles and all sorts of, you're buying stuff now, that cost has gone up, but that's a significant increase to the district in terms of budgeting and cash management, but just to make you kind of aware of what's going on there. It is best practice if we can try to stay on that schedule for the buses. We have in the past, you know, and we're making that thing to work, gone, a bus or two at times, and that really puts us behind as you're trying to play catch-up on that. So we're doing our best to stay on track with that. Other things that have come out of there are normal items, your payroll, payroll taxes, payroll liabilities. The one I've been talking about for quite a few months. The one I've been talking about for quite a few months now as we've got those funds for the CTE and HVAC are the 2022A project reimbursement and those expenses. Typically each month, there's an exact flow of expenditure to revenue. What we've done, as much as has allowed us to do with cash, is not reimburse ourselves fully from that fund to help earn interest as much as possible. We've done pretty well and a little better than anticipated, I think originally Ailer was giving us a number of about $80,000 and we should be well above that, a hundred thousand or so. It's hard to true out exactly sometimes because of the way investments go when you're realized gains and unrealized gains, but as it says that I've done bankrupt the last month and what we have left for expenditures, we should be alright, which will allow the district to get, handle some projects that are not the flashy variety, but there are things that are needed. Beadham Doors would be one of those types of items. We were able to get the EFS done around the high school building and we're working currently on the CCC, some of that EFS down there. Helps us to expand some of the FFNE budget that was originally planned for, to help us furnish out some of the areas that were remodeled as well. So by being pretty good on top of management of not only the funds, but the product itself, we're able to get some things done that are going to require to help down the road in terms of the budget too, not having to put things on LTFM, we're not having to try to find ways out of the general fund to fund those items. So all around a good project and I think it'd be nice to be showing off on Wednesday at the open house. Any questions on the financial, you can have the best answer.
Anything for Josh? Thank you. We look for a motion to approve the finance report as stated. Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion. All in favor of the finance report as shown, say aye. Aye. Opposed. That is carried by zero. Consent agenda, items under consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. We always begin with Jeff acknowledging the acceptance of gifts.
Yes, we want to thank these donors this month for their generous gifts. Some of them have already been mentioned, but we'll go through again and hit them. $400 from Community Resource Bank for Boys and Girls Soccer. $200 from the Verdeja family for snacks for the classroom. $360 from St. Ansgers for basketball, water bottles, nurses' office supplies. $400 from Meg Judge Estate for the nursing department. $4,907.36 from the Ginyu County American Dairy Association Committee for milk machines. $3,000 from Brad and Jessica Anderson for milk machines. $3,000 from Mark and Roxanne Soder for milk machines. $10,000 from the SHIP grant through Lori Hanson for milk machines. And then they mentioned some of the other donors as well that we don't have listed here like Vinscar's Trucking and there's a couple of others as well that Roxanne had mentioned. $534.28 from the Ed Foundation's for flexible seating for Liz Pearson's room. $4,400 for the Ed Foundation for eighth grade STEM engineering project, skateboard build, and $400 from the Ed Foundation for a D-5500 camera for the lantern for John Foley. So thank you all for your generous donations.
Take a quick look and when you're ready to make a motion on the consent agenda, we will.
I have one question on the monthly bills, Josh. Cannon Falls Township Bus Garage?
Yeah, so half of that got built back to the bus garage. Drive right across the culvert that needs repairing.
So, didn't that happen in Cannon Falls Township?
That, yeah, it's, I'm sorry, more of our roads. And we worked out with Andy at Safelink that we would split the cost. We paid it off and we'll link on the back there now.
Thank you.
I have one question as well, sorry with the finances. The huddle, is that a one-time or is this?
Annual subscription.
Annual, okay.
That would be not only the packaging for the coaches for scouting and video, but also the cameras in the gym that we will broadcast the live stream for.
Ready to make a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Clinton, the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Lou. Other discussion. All in favor of the acceptance of the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed. That is carried. No old business under new business. Consideration to approve a baseball trip to Jackie Robinson Training Facility in Nero Beach during spring break, March 24th to 28th for ages for grades 10 through 12. Bucky, would you like to begin conversation or?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything besides what I sent you except that three weeks ago when we kind of started talking about board approval and the parents wanted some answers quick, I said, let's just do this. If the board approves it on the 25th and if the facility still has openings and we can get flights, then we know it's meant to be. And the facility's still open and I got an email from Sun Country today that they still have flights, so it's all on you now.
The one thing about Bucky, whenever he presents, you can be assured that he's got his ducks in a row. That's who he is. Reed, you looked this over, this is something that you're approving or?
Absolutely, yeah, we talked two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago about it, what that would look like and if it would be something we would try to do every other year with the spring trip. I think it's a great opportunity, for sure.
When kids sign up to go, is there ever a problem with being able to finance their part of the trip?
Good question. So what I did is I surveyed parents and first of all asked, you know, would your son like to go or would you like your son to go? Because I went all through the parents first, because I didn't want to try to do something that parents weren't in favor of and they were super in favor of it, more than I ever expected. So the cost estimates are that it's going to cost about $1,500 per player. So I asked them, I said, if we don't fundraise and cover $1,500 per player, are you willing to pay the rest? And 18 out of 18 that responded say yes. So that was very encouraging and a little bit surprising.
Do you have some fundraising stuff kind of lined up and ready to go?
Yeah, I have 10 parents that are willing to serve on a fundraising committee and a couple already have leads for donations, so one for sure. So once we get approval, then we can start that process.
Perfect.
So this is the presentation and it's been endorsed by the athletic department, activities department. Do you have any other questions here?
Yeah, why didn't I get this? I know. You didn't have spring break back then.
Bucky, you will obviously probably start earlier in the process the next time this goes around.
Yep, and that was part of our, I did a Zoom meeting with all the parents and that was part of their question. I said, well, I've talked to Stewartville, Hayfield, Holy Family and Brett, they're four teams that have gone regularly and I know Stewartville starts a year ahead, so in March, to prepare for the next March is when they start. So that would be the right way to do it.
Sure.
But we didn't get started till July, till right after our awards night, so.
I think it's great. I move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Luke, seconded by Jo Lynn to approve the baseball trip as shown. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. That is carried. Congratulations and good.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Yes.
Consideration to approve a 23-24 Assurance of Compliance Equity Law.
Sure. The next few items are routine for this type of year that you need to have the board approve these items. The first one is the Assurance of Compliance and Equity Laws and ensures that the district is following these federal and state laws that are listed. I'm sure you've read all of them and know them, but we are in compliance with them, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Jo Lynn on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. All in favor of the approval of the 23-24 Assurance of Compliance Equity Laws, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Carried. Consideration to approve the resolution authoring a transfer of general fund to food service fund if applicable.
Yes, and the last part of that is probably what deals with this year. In past years, we've had to make transfer during the audit season from the general fund to cover the food service fund because the food service fund cannot be negative. This year, that will not be the case, but just in case we want to keep on with this process, so we don't, we're anticipating we need to transfer money this year.
Okay, it's procedural and it's a resolution, so we'll need a motion, a second, and then we can discuss it further. Katie on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jo Lynn. Other discussion. Cook, would you read the resolution?
I have it on my page as well.
Close to it.
All right. Whereas Minnesota Statute 124D dot 111 subdivision 3 defines a criterion process for Minnesota school districts to transfer funds from the general fund to the food service fund and whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 has determined that a transfer of funds is necessary to eliminate the deficit in the food service fund, be it hereby resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252 to transfer dollars from the general fund to the food service fund. The motion for adoption for the foregoing resolution was made by member Katie, seconded by Jo Lynn. And upon vote being taken thereon, the following voted in favor thereof.
If we do transfer money, we will let you guys know.
So a yes vote would be my vote.
Luke?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Clinton?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
We've been passed it by a 5-0 vote. Consideration to set truth and taxation date of December 18th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the high school boardroom right here. Okay?
It is as it's read. I'm recommending that date, so if somebody wants to motion that, that'll be our truth and taxation meeting.
I'll make a motion to a third.
Katie on the motion?
Second.
Clinton on the second. Other discussion. All in favor of the truth and taxation date being December 18th, right here at 6:00 PM, say aye. Aye. Opposed. That is carried. Consideration to approve the 23 payable 24 prelim levy.
This is a yearly item in September that I recommend that you set the maximum levy and then in December at the final truth and taxation meeting, we'll set an actual number for our levy. The number that you set tonight, the reason why you don't set a specific number tonight is because you cannot levy higher after tonight. And so you want to set the maximum, you can always lower it in December. So you set the maximum tonight as a preliminary and then you will set your actual number in December.
That's after the audit?
Yeah, the truth and taxation will be after the audit. Josh, I don't know if you want to explain the preliminary levy?
Definitely. So in order for companies to get their levy information set up to be a preliminary data put in for the levy, we always recommend at this time of year to certify the maximum because there will be fluctuations from now until the levy information is finalized, whether it be referendums that are being passed, whether it be, you know, choice from the district to reduce an item or even just the state or the county correcting some data, whether it be ADMs or residential market value, all sorts of things. So it allows there to be fluctuations until that actually happens. When there is the actual truth and taxation meeting in December, we'll go through more in-depth of what changes are. The big change you see there is 9.5 is the total. Usually, the big kind driver of that debt service, where I can speak to a little bit of big changes there, the debt service is set to recover 105% and it's expecting that there be some delinquent taxpayers. This area, this company, for us, usually collects very well and there typically is an excess of debt that we're allowed to get back to the taxpayers. Because of the timing of our CTE HVAC project, there was some capitalized interest that was put in that project and our financing company, Ailer, is recommending we hold 280,000 of that to help pay those payments, so we're not able to do that, kind of push it back to taxpayers that we may normally be able to do. So whereas in other years, again, 22 pay 23, there was an excess debt reduction there. We didn't actually take all the money that we could have in that year. We're going back this year, we're going to take more of that. So the increase is like 232, but 280 of that is sort of capitalized interest on the project, so. It does show as an increase and it's partly going to be a little bit swayed by the fact that we were able to have that excess in the prior year, so that number is artificially low. This number is higher than normal, so the larger increases will show. Just as a result, when you do your 24th pay 25 levy, that should be a significant reduction then for the general fund debt, debt service.
Question for Josh? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the 23 payable 24 prelim levy.
I have a motion to approve it.
At max.
I'll second.
At max, okay. Luke on the motion? Jo Lynn on the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Carried. We're going to tour soon. Brad coming in is always an eye-opener, people like that, that give us square numbers on where we lie, how our funding is and what we do with our funding. And I just want to reemphasize with a team effort we showed tonight, when you look at the donations we got for our dairy, our startup costs and the continuance of that. Our community supports our school because we show them what good we do with it. U.S. News and World Report came out with their latest and I was looking at, I was looking at Big Ten schools and how they rank as far as scholastics or academics. And then the statement that they made was that they use the information from U.S. News and World Report as their bible for acknowledgement and truthfulness in how they rate colleges, therefore how they rate high schools. Once more, I think there was 400 schools in Minnesota and we're in the top 15% as to how our report card, for lack of better, shows up. I think we always should acknowledge that to the community. You're supporting us, but why? It's because we offer a great academic program. The people who are in charge of our finance, which we stamp afterward, have done a magnificent job with the money that they have. So we need to make that statement when we get, when we get information in a positive light about our school. It shows us a total team effort from everybody in the community, to our donators, to our administrators and our educators. Thanks to all of you.
One thing I want to add on to that, while you're in that vein, you're right, you know, top 15%, but if you remember the number that Brad Lindell gave us tonight about where we rank in the funding? Top 15% academically, bottom 25% funding. Do you think that we're not doing good things here with your guys' tax dollars?
Okay. Anyone else for the cause? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Jo Lynn on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Opposed. That is carried. We're finished.